... with the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as they do business, Father. Father, now we just pray that the decisions here made here today will be pleasing in your eyes. Father, now we ask all of this, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Moore-Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Costanza.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
All right.
Okay, we have just one comment from Senator Ricky Goldman. Ricky's been very patient sitting here, so come on Ricky. We could've got to last, end of last meeting, but it worked out fine.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm here this morning just to present myself and my organization, which is the New Design for Living NDFL, which is a recovery program for alcoholism and for drug addiction. And our mission statement is to guide individuals struggling with addiction and alcoholism into a lasting recovery fostered by a transformative walk in relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. And that with that statement, I just want you to know that I'm a recovering addict and alcoholic myself for over the last four decades, and I've been working in this field for quite some time, and God has given me this assignment and this mission, not just here in Montgomery, but throughout these whole United States. Been speaking all around these United States on behalf of AANNA, and also through recovery. And I understand that the society in which we live with in right now, the root problem of most of our crimes of eighty-five percent is caused by the use of alcohol and drugs. And so that's my mission, to go into all the neighborhoods possible, to install satellite divisions of NDFL, to educate and to motivate, to train, and also to prepare recovery for those who are willing and that has the heart to want to change. The only way we can change people's lives is first of all, we have to change the way we think. And that's my mission, to instill in them the principles, the biblical principles behind the 12-step program, in order to get a new way of living into their lives. And hopefully, that you guys will be able to assist me and facilitate us financially or whatever, in trying to get this program installed into all of our communities in Montgomery, in order to bring about a better way of living for each and every one of us. Some way, somehow, everyone in this room has someone in their families that has had a problem with alcohol or drugs that have affected your family in some way or form. And that's my mission, and that's my assignment, to help as many people as I can, as long as I live. God bless you, and thank you for letting me share.
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
I asked Mr. Goldman to come, just for transparency, and I know that we have a task force for opioid addiction, and we receive funds from some of the manufacturers of these substances. And of course, the settlement agreement that was made with many of these manufacturers of these opioids that have caused addiction and just have torn up families, three of the categories that the settlement agreement emphasizes, education, prevention, and treatment. And I know we've done some things as it relates to perhaps treatment with the sheriff and the purchase of the automatic defibrillators for the patrol cars, but I don't know if we've really done anything really on the education and prevention portion. And so I asked Mr. Goldman to come, and once he's vetted, if indeed his program can address those areas, I would hope that this commission would consider taking him on as a partner as it relates to opioid addiction and treatment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it, Kendall.
All right. Item number one, presentation of the minutes, considered minutes of the regular meeting of November the 4th, 2025. And as a gentle reminder, these will be roll call votes.
Or voice votes.
Voice votes, yes, and voice.
So I hear the motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number two, consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number three, consider agreement with Numo DMV LLC, formerly known as Intellectual Technology Incorporated, for self-service kiosk.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm a no.
Likewise opposed.
No.
All right, so we got four yays, one.
I've never said anything.
Who never? Who never said anything?
I didn't.
Oh, okay. We got three, this is.
Three yays, one no, one abstaining.
Are you abstaining?
Yay, we'll go ahead with it.
All right, so just to clarify, four yeses, one.
No.
No. Okay. And motion carries.
Item number four, consider memorandum of understanding between the administrative office of courts and the Montgomery County Commission for Referee Maria Patterson.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number five, consider Piney Branch Plant, Piney Branch Plantation Pla- Old Barnes Road.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number six, consider preliminary engineering and construction agreement for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number seven, consider amendment number one to contract with Sharp Cut Lawn Service to provide landscape and engineering maintenance service to Elton Dean Park and landscape maintenance at Sheriff DT Marshall Firearms Training Center until January 6th, 2027.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider amendment number two to contract with Armstrong Relocation to provide move-in and storage services until January 1st, 2027.
Move for approval. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number nine, consider amendment number two to contract with Move &amp; Store LLC, doing businesses Admiral Movers, to extend the contract until January 1st, 2027.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 10, consider resolution authorizing the county's Thanksgiving holiday observance on Friday, November 28th, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 11, consider employee recognition and appreciation program and related 2025 budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 12, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with one addition, $5,000 from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler to the Alabama Boys Foundation.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 13, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of $2,000 to principal discretionary at Danley Elementary from Commissioner Harris.
Move for approval. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 14, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of, let's see, $500 from Commissioner Harris, 1,500 from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler, 1,500 from Commissioner Sankey, and 1,500 from Commissioner Singleton to St. Paul AME for the Rosa Parks Celebration, and 1,500 from Commissioner Sankey to the Youth Leadership Institute.
That didn't sound right. That didn't sound right, Kendall.
That's not right. Go back, Kendall.
Okay. St. Paul, $500 from Commissioner Harris, 15.
No.
Not to St. Paul.
No.
It's to Doris, Ms. Crenshaw, what is that, Southern?
Okay, it's a different organization. Yeah, but it says something.
Uh huh. All that goes to that. I forward it to you now.
Okay.
To her.
All right, we'll get that organization straight.
Southern Youth Leadership.
Southern.
Southern Youth Leadership Conference.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate that, Commissioner Harris. All right, Southern Youth Leadership Conference, 500 from Harris, 500 from Moore-Ziegler, 500, I mean, 500 from Harris, 15 from Moore-Ziegler, 15 from Sankey, and 15 from Singleton.
Right.
All right, that's correct. 1,500 from Commissioner Sankey to the Youth Leadership Institute, which is a different organization.
Same organization.
Same organization, okay. All right, well, let me X out this, all right, that's why we go over this, so we can get it right.
You wanted 5,000 to St. Paul.
You wanted an additional 5,000 to St. Paul.
No, I hadn't given it all to St. Paul.
Okay.
So put them in there for that one. I matched it. Harris, didn't you say you did five to St. Paul?
Yeah, I already did.
That's what I had.
That's it, that's it.
I see why it got mixed up. There is a $5,000 from St. Paul from you, okay.
Do you need to go over it again?
I got 5,000 from St. Paul.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore-Ziegler, I have 500 from Harris, 1,500 from Moore-Ziegler, 1,500 from Sankey, 1,500 from Singleton to the Southern Youth Conference.
That's it.
And then I have, and that's it.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Just for clarification, what's going to St. Paul, please?
$5,000 from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler.
And I also ask for.
You wanted 1,500.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's what we're here for.
I do feel left out on the youth leadership, just want to tell you.
You want to do St. Paul?
No, I'm good.
But we can, they'll take your money though, Justice. And we're gonna start giving Kendall some Wheaties in the morning. Wheaties, give him some Wheaties. All right.
So now I need a motion, correct?
Yes.
All right, need a motion?
I move for approval.
I would be happy to second it.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
All right, item number 15, consider travel and training requests for the commission, detention, and the sheriff's office.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Those are all of our items.
Wave rules.
Ah, my bad. Yeah, I need my Wheaties this morning. All right, item number 16, consider U.S. Department of Justice Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification.
Move for approval.
No objection, approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed.
Item number 17, consider bid award to Green Code Landscape LLC to provide landscape maintenance service at industrial park.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 18, consider bid award to Outdoor Obsession to provide grounds maintenance at Montgomery County Parks.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Likewise opposed. Motion carries.
And item number 19, consider agreement with Xerox for digitat- digit- digital conversion of property record cards for appraisal.
Move for approval.
That word been with me all day.
It did, that's why you need your Wheaties, move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed. And I, Tammy, I'm abstaining for conflict of interest. So motion carries. Four, zero, one.
Item number 20, consider, item number 20 should not be on there.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah. Yeah, item number 20 should not be on there. Item number 21, consider memorandum, that should not be on there as well.
We just had four of them.
Yeah, there were only four.
Yeah.
I had a little bit of confusion.
But that, number 20.
Okay, so yeah, we had a slight i-compass issue this morning, so that's probably what threw those in there. So let's jump down to number 22. Consider proposed local legislative bills for the upcoming 2026 legislative session.
Pause real quick, just to confirm, the MOU between us with the kiosk, that will be on next, that'll be on the future agenda?
That will be on next formal session, so that will be on the December 2nd meeting.
Yep. Okay, so back to legislative bills, I move for approval.
Second. So we're on number 22, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise opposed.
No, I'm a no on that one.
Okay. All right, motion carries, four, one, zero.
Now, those are all of our items.
Now, that number 20, did we go over that one today? We didn't go with it.
No, sir, so we put it on the initial agenda, and it was identified, our risk manager, Melissa, was reviewing it and saw something that needed to be discussed, so we pulled it, and so, like I said, we had that i-compass glitch this morning, probably which is what threw it on here, in the wave rules.
Okay, no, so that'd be something coming up.
That'll be on the information session, or it may be a wave rules item next time, but you all will receive it in early, so that it can be reviewed and make sure that everything's in there that needs to be in there.
Mr. Administrator, Ms. Attorney, one thing that we did miss, Kendall, and I say I missed it, was that Sonny had sent from ACCA, counties asked to adopt resolution to intervene in SSUT lawsuit. It doesn't have to be done until by December 3rd, so we do meet on December 2nd.
Yes.
But it is a resolution, we're asking a coordinated effort for all 67 counties to intervene in a lawsuit challenging SSUT here in Montgomery County Circuit Court. Because the lawsuit was filed by the city of Tuscaloosa, it is important that we make it clear to the judge that all local governments do not share the view of that city. In order to meet the deadline established by the court, we need all counties to adopt the resolution linked below and provide association with electronic copy no later than Wednesday, December 3rd. The resolution is straightforward, the association will coordinate one unified filing for all interested counties. It will be necessary for your county to engage an attorney, it will not be necessary for to engage an attorney. The resolution's here, I will make sure that this gets sent to all the commissioners, but I would like to ask for the commissioners' consideration to have that on the next agenda.
Yes.
If I could, and everybody will have this resolution, and we can decide on if we want to participate with all the other counties.
Yes, and this is to make sure we keep this clear, we have previously done a resolution supporting the version of SSUT that we currently have. I think this resolution is asking for some level of intervention, us supporting the intervention, so just want to make sure that we've had two different things come before us, and these are, they are not the same.
Yeah, and we're, being in Montgomery County, that's where the.
That's where the lawsuit will happen.
It's important that we participate if we can, so.
Yes.
Everybody should get that, I just emailed it to you, so again, apologize for that, thank you, Sonny, if you're watching, for texting me and reminding me I didn't do my job. All right, so, Ms. Attorney, Deputy Administrator?
Yes, sir. You know, I declined the last two meetings, so I gotta talk. The sheriff is gone, so I'm really grateful, I was, to have three members of leadership Montgomery Class 17 here with Cedric, the sheriff, and myself, so I like to throw that in every chance I get, best class ever. As to Thanksgiving holiday approach, I try to have a heart filled with gratitude all year long, but it's something about the holidays, I think, that just bring touches an extra part of my heart. So I'm a, do like Commissioner Costanza, I wrote my brief words down, so I wouldn't forget or get emotional and not remember. As we gather this weekend, the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'm reminded of the many blessings God gives us, each of us, every single day, blessings that are easy to overlook in the rush of our daily lives. I am grateful for our community, for the people who serve it with dedication, and for the opportunities we have to make a positive difference. In this season of gratitude, I believe is important, not only to recognize our blessings, but to be a blessing to others, whether through kindness, service, or simple encouragement, each of us has the ability to make our community stronger and more compassionate. May we carry the spirit of Thanksgiving forward in all that we do. Thank you.
Carmen.
Oh, wow, I don't know how to follow that one up right there, Reggie.
Wait a minute, I missed Dan, Dan, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Dan, Commissioner Harris.
What she said. That's all I have.
Yeah, Vice Chair Moore-Ziegler.
I don't, it's hard to follow that one up, but at the end of the day, we give thanks every day for waking up, for being present, and for trying to make a difference in someone's life. And I hope that all of us here in Montgomery County has done, do just that in our district, we make a difference in someone's life, and that we strive to live a committed life for God, so that, and if you do that, if you live a committed life for God, then everything will be okay, because you'll do exactly what He has planned. Giving thanks to everyone, I give thanks, first of all, to everybody that's sitting here with me every day, to the staff, and to everybody that makes Montgomery County great. I thank you for what you do, give thanks to family, friends, and I'm gonna say something, I, well, I thought about, actually, Justin the other day, when I saw something, and the gentleman talked about God giving thanks even for Judas.
All right now.
So you know, and that one, when you.
Now, can we discuss how that made you think of me?
Well, no, 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 because I thought about you, when he talked and explained it, and said about God, and talking about why God gave thanks, I thought about you, because that meant I've watched you tear us out of all of us, always give thanks since you've been here, for just the smallest of things. And for that, I was saying that reminded me of you, because I think you're an example of living a committed life, for not just your district, but for your people, and how we all have to strive for that, and strive to even giving thanks for even for our enemies. And that's a powerful thing to do. And so, and when you do that, then you know you really have lived a committed life for God. So I strive to let everyone know that on Monday at 11 o'clock at Gateway, I will continue the tradition of the late, great Elton Dean by feeding my seniors in District 2. So I ask any of you to be there 11 o'clock, if you live in District 2, be there at 11. We will have good food, Thanksgiving food for you, prizes to give away on that day. And so, and I do it alone with the president of the City Council, C.C. Calhoun, so if you're in District 2 or City Council 5, please come out 11 o'clock, Gateway, you have to be 65 and above, and I love your grandkids, but please don't bring them on that day. And come out and enjoy and sit and fellowship with us, and we do this in memory of the late, great Chairman Dean, who I think it's been three years that he's gone away from us, but we want to continue to live in his legacy. So that's it, and if I don't see you anymore before Thanksgiving, to all my people up here, happy to have a happy Thanksgiving, and remember, it's all about Christ when you leave every day.
Commissioner Costanza.
Amen. Thank you, Carmen, those are very kind words. I'll start with a couple of events. First, want to invite everybody I mentioned last time, but we're having the Christmas at Eastbrook, really is like a living Hallmark movie. If you'll come out this coming Monday, November the 24th, 5:30 to 7:30. I'm gonna leave here in just a minute to go be on WAK to talk about it, in fact, so I'm gonna try to get the press out and have a big night, and last year we had four or 500 people come out, and this year I think we'll have even more, but absolutely awesome opportunity to come and walk the shops of Eastbrook and get to see the community come together. We'll have a Christmas tree lighting, we'll light up the entire thoroughfare, that'll stay lit through the season, and so thank you to Julie Beard from the City Council who partners, and the entire crew that has made this possible. This win, or this Monday night, the Monday before Thanksgiving, the Christmas at Eastbrook, 5:30 to 7:30, all are invited, not just County Commission District 3, anybody can come out. I missed the opportunity to share last meeting about AIM, the Aid to Inmate Mothers, I was so proud to get to go, and three of us were at lunch where Rhonda Walker, my predecessor, was the keynote speaker and gave an incredible testimony of faith, and a testimony of the importance of having people in your life that believe in you, and accepting, accepting the hardships that are in life, and so for that to really resonate this week of Thanksgiving is super important. But Aid to Inmate Mothers is an organization that does incredible work with folks that sometimes we, it is easy to forget about them, it is easy to forget the hardships that these mothers face, and the children who did not make that same choice, who need the support, so very, very proud of Aid to Inmate Mothers and what they did. Really cool to be at the sheriff's substation, ribbon cutting for all the folks that made that possible. You know, Wesley's here, and Derek, and you guys, the work that Montgomery County is doing in the city of Montgomery, in this, in this community is incredible, and we cannot, cannot undercut that. I go to lots of neighborhood associations, and it is such a great opportunity for me to brag on the good work that you guys do. And so from the, you know, the inclusion of the latest grant in the expansion of services, and that substation, Montgomery County's doing its part, so very, very proud of what we're doing. And then just, you know, I am thankful, November 13th was one year in office, and it, for me, you guys have been around a little longer, and it has been an incredible year of transformation for me personally, and it's been very hard in a lot of ways. And what makes it doable is when you surround yourself with the people that believe in the same things you believe in. And as a government, and as a political force, sometimes that can be hard to do, because there's things that get in the way. And so our challenge is to surround ourselves by people who have the like mind and have a similar goal. And that person may not look like you, or sound like you, or come from where you come from, they may not even be in your, in your natural family, but you have the challenge to figure out what it is that God's placed in your heart, and the challenge is to discern His path and then to have the courage to walk it. And to walk that path means that you gotta go through ugly stuff sometimes, and it means that maybe you're alone, and that you need to find the light, and that light, which may seem far away sometimes, can come to you by surrounding yourself by people who also shine His light. So when you find moments of darkness, find people to surround yourself with who also shine Christ's light. That's why I'm proud to sit next to these God-fearing folks on this bench, because that's what we have to do. We have hard decisions, we may disagree about what this economic development opportunity is, or how this kiosk may work, but at the end of the day, we're gonna do the right thing for the right reasons, and we're in a, we're in a. But at the end of the day, we're gonna do the right thing for the right reasons, and we're in a, we're in a place where I'm kinda tired of hearing all the bad, and I, I'd love to hear more about the good. And I appreciate everybody in this room and everybody on this commission who is continually part of the good, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And that should be our focus, and that's what I'm thankful for. And so, um, my encouragement to each of my fellow commissioners to continue to do the hard stuff, even when the world may say that it's wrong, but you, you know that it's right for the right reasons, and we're gonna keep doing that. And I'm, I'm about proud to be a part of, uh, of this commission. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and excited to see you in a couple of weeks.
Commissioner Sankey?
Yes, Ms. Chandler, just, I encourage you all to just go out, enjoy your Thanksgiving, and take a little time with someone who you really at first thought just don't want to be bothered with. Just take a little time for those people who, you know, you just might not really have time for. I think you'll be blessed with that, so all the best to you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, Cedric, thank you again for being here and sharing a little bit about the Maxwell Gateway Project and kind of the things going on out there. Uh, we really appreciate that. I'm gonna be a little longer, I'll be like Justin today a little bit, but, um, you know, Whitewater, when we raised our hands on this commission about ten, I guess, well, we ain't been there ten years, have we, Isaiah? So about nine years ago, uh, Commissioner Harris was on here for a few years before us. Uh, Justin and Carmen were not a member of the body of the commission back then. Um, you know, Chairman Dean, he had this vision out on this area of town that had blighted property, had a lot of crime, unfortunately, in that area because of the blighted property. Uh, we had challenges with Maxwell Air Force Base, the one point two million people that drove down that Maxwell Boulevard, all they saw was homelessness, blighted property. And we made the, the tough, tough decision to invest in Montgomery Whitewater. And I think Chairman Dean, if he was alive today, he'd probably be very proud of what he sees out there and be really proud of the potential that we have for out there. Now, it costs a lot of money, not trying to hide that. It is a constant strain on us as a commission. I mean, I, every, all I think about is Jackson Hospital and Montgomery Whitewater, to be honest with y'all. But we can't let it fail, and it falls on the body of this commission, unfortunately, to make sure it stays open and stays operating. Yes, it costs money. I remember when Dr. Bronner started the RSA, uh, Robert Trent Jones Trails. I played golf with Dr. Bronner back in those days. I thought he was absolutely crazy to invest the millions of dollars in golf courses across the state of Alabama. And it took many, many, many years before they started turning profit. But they immediately brought tourism and tax dollars, sales tax revenue, development to all those areas where you had the golf courses. I remember when Bobby Bright was mayor, and I think when they did Riverwalk Stadium, I was adamantly against Riverwalk Stadium. I thought it was a waste of taxpayers' dollars. I vocally said that. Lord, thank goodness I was wrong. Look at how, what's happened to downtown Montgomery. It didn't happen the first year, second year, or third year. And I'm not trying to compare Montgomery Whitewater to RSA and what Dr. Bronner does, because nobody does it like Dr. Bronner does, or even to Riverwalk Stadium. But it's gonna take a little bit of time, longer than we want, to us to continue to invest to keep Montgomery Whitewater open, because if we don't, and we just throw our hands up and say, okay, we're tired of spending money out there, just let it close, then we have a beautiful facility sitting there empty, and nothing else is gonna happen on Maxwell Boulevard, probably in my lifetime, if we don't have that catalyst, that anchor there. So this commission's in a tough spot. It, it puts a lot of pressure on us, it causes a lot of conflict between us. I hate it. Honestly, I hate being in the situation we in, but like Commissioner Costanza said back six months ago, and, and I've heard Carmen say this on occasion, and then over and over again, we can't let it close. We can't let it fail. And finally, after all this time, we're so close to having a boom out there. You talking about Redstone Arsenal? I mean, comparison to Redstone Arsenal? It don't have to compare to Redstone Arsenal. I just love having it in the same sentence. And when Cedric said that, it just gets me excited about the potentials out there. But again, we're gonna come up with a plan and on how we can continue to support this until they get where they can be solvent and self-sustainable down the road. But it's not gonna happen this year, it's not gonna happen next year. It takes a while for businesses to, to catch up and get to that point. It may never get to that point, I don't know. But I look at what it's done so far as far as stability at Maxwell, and y'all have heard me say this, and economic development, quality of life for us here in Montgomery for our residents. So I think Chairman Dean, I'm proud of what it's done so far. I wish, again, that we didn't have to put another dime into it, but it's so important, and there's so many great things that are right on the verge of being announced that people will hopefully say, hey, that's a good investment, and the tax dollars that it's gonna generate in that quarter as a catalyst. Commissioner Sankey made a great point, you know, can we recoup some of our investment? Yes, we will. At some point, when all that gets developed out there that they have plans to develop, it's gonna be something we're all gonna be very, very proud of, but we're in the growing pains right now, and it falls upon this commission. We've had help from city and state and, and, uh, Porch Creek Indians that helped us, but now it's kinda laid in our lap to, to make this thing be sustainable and keep operating. So just want to let y'all know, we don't take this lightly at all. And, uh, boy, if I could flip a switch and make that place profitable, never have to come back to us again, it'd be great. But we know we're gonna have to either make the decision that we're gonna continue to sustain this and keep it operating, or we're just gonna throw our hands up and say, okay, we've had enough, uh, and that will be a vote of this commission, uh, on whether or not, which direction we want to continue to go. But we will have a plan, uh, on the next meeting to going forward on how we want to move forward, uh, with Montgomery Whitewater and funding. Well, we ain't gotta keep bringing this up every two weeks to try to help them make, uh, their payments out there, to keep their employees happy, keep the employees receiving a paycheck, and keep the park open and serving in Montgomery. Uh, we do have the ice rating, ice skating coming up. I, I can't remember when that, Kendall, when that is.
It's already started.
Yeah, but the open, and the grand, there's a grand opening or something coming up, this, something, I saw.
Friday.
This Friday, okay, at four o'clock.
Four, four thirty.
Okay, I think it's four o'clock, so. All right, that's all I have, so, uh-
Chairman, I got a couple of things.
Sure, please.
I just thought about. Um, Friday, we, we kinda came up with, as we do different things around the county, we, knowing that next week is going to be a very pivotal week for all college football fans, as we have the Egg Bowl, the Iron Bowl, so many college rivalries. Turkey Day, Classic is, is next Thursday, and so we have encouraged all of our county employees to show their team spirit next Friday, uh, this Friday. Um, so we're encouraging all county employees to wear their favorite jersey, their favorite team jersey, and we're gonna get some pictures at various departments. They gonna send them to Cody, and we gonna post them on our social media to let people know what a wonderful place it is to work in Montgomery County. Um, so we look forward to everybody participating in that on Friday. And then on Monday, the first, correct, Cody, we have our Christmas tree lighting. If you've driven up the street on our lawn street and driven past the courthouse, you can see that the wonderful Christmas tree that we started our tradition with last year is up, and it is ready to be lit, so we are making preparations for that. So we, uh, thoroughly encourage all of our county staff, as well as, and most importantly, all of the citizens of Montgomery County to come out on Monday, December the first, and we will light the Christmas tree, and, uh, we just look forward to it. So just want to remind everybody of those two things as we, uh, start to enjoy our Thanksgiving holiday and shift into that, that big push towards Christmas. Thank you all.
And also, Alabama County Commission Association Regional Meeting, District Meeting is tonight.
Okay.
Seventeen Springs, uh, in Millbrook. Hopefully, everybody got the email from ACCA. You never got that on?
I'll be at Arrowhead Country Club with, uh, Arrowhead Annual Meeting.
I'm supposed to be there too.
Yeah. I will be late. Be, I'll be late. I'll be there seven fifteen. So, they know.
I didn't, I didn't get that email. You're talking about Doug.
Yeah, I, I-
Kev mentioned this morning. That was my first.
I thought they sent it out to all commissioners in the district.
Maybe it's just you.
Uh, I don't think it was just me, though, but we'll find out. But anyways, tonight.
Yes.
At six o'clock in Millbrook. Uh, so if you wanna participate and go, uh, please let Kendall or Regina know so they can, uh, reserve a spot. Uh, who, uh, Kevin's gonna be there tonight, so Kevin can reserve a- Let Kevin know, because he'll reserve you a spot at the table, uh, for dinner. So there is dinner served at, tonight, so. And they do these all over the state, so. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.